It amongst the client. It then blocks them from doing all of it. Yeah, we usually have one in. I think it's our. Yeah, they are. Yeah, because you're not, you're not under any P D.
No, it's not. I always forget, but we're not. Kind of things like capital.
Yeah, no, they're covered now.
I wish they were.
They're breathing, yeah. And you get so many different. Oh, right.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, he does have a lot of legal advisers, which then turn up to here. Uh, he goes through his disclosure papers, he wanted to know the D R D. I mean, there was like fifty issues. Here's the L A, it's my delay. It's all usually that day, man. All rises eight.
No further submissions, as I indicated before, just one point I wanted to raise.
Yes.
If you have a skeleton argument. The question of whether the I G T um authority and the gross sections. At two of the bundle, page twenty one, paragraph forty seven four. I appreciate there's just three lines there, but the paragraph numbers in the I G T case are the ones like.
Yes.
So it's just not the standard.
Uh, Mr. Beale.
My lords. Uh, my lady, my lords, thank you. Um, my lady, my lords, uh, the issue in this appeal is whether the letter dated the twenty second of September twenty twenty two. I'd call it a pat reply in my skeleton. Sent by the council to the respondent, which set out reasons why the council considered that it did not need to conduct a procurement exercise under the P C Rs before entering into the development contract, which is in issue in these proceedings. Whether that letter constituted the giving of relevant reasons within regulation ninety three, five and six of the P C Rs, so as to engage the shorter time limit in ninety three two A. We say obviously no, the answer to that is no, and we say the judge was right to so conclude, although I'm not going to go back to the judge. And before I get into the detail of that, we basically made essentially two main positive, if you like, points. I'll have a few other bits where I need to pick up, in answer to my learned friend, points of made. Those two points are as follows. First of all, we say that the plain language of regulation ninety three and fifty five, to which ninety three obviously cross refers, make clear that the shorter time limit will only apply where a candidate or tenderer within an extant procurement exercise is given reasons falling within reg fifty five two, those being essentially.
Yeah, that's going quite fast.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
When a candidate or tenderer.
Within an extant procurement exercise is given reasons falling within regulation fifty five two, those being essentially, and I'll come back to fifty five two with a bit more detail, obviously, but essentially reasons why the candidate or tenderer was unsuccessful in that exercise. That does not apply, therefore, where the reasons that are given are reasons why contracting authority does not consider that it required to conduct a procurement exercise at all. And it follows, though this is in a sense not, I don't need to be right about this last bit, but it follows. We would therefore add that regulation ninety three, five is necessarily inapplicable to a case where no procurement exercise has been conducted. As our primary submission from the language, and we say that that primary submission is supported by one other particularly important matter, which is that the situation of this case, i.e. the situation where the contracting authority says that it doesn't need to conduct a procurement exercise, is expressly catered for by regulation ninety three, three and four, which envisages that it may make a public statement, relevant contract award notice will come to the detail, uh, which will, which will engage the shorter time limit. So it's very, insofar as the language is ambiguous, my first point, it's like not fully accepted, I suppose. Then, in any event, there is no reason to construe it widely to cater for a situation which is expressly catered for in the immediately previous provision. And indeed, there is, if I need to go so far, there is every reason to construe it narrowly, though. Since that's down the line, because I say you don't need to go that far. That's the heart of it. Now, there are some various other points about Alstom and so forth that I'll pick up at the end, but that's the heart of it. In terms of the facts.
Sorry, there, there were two main points.
Yeah.
I have to, I wrote that all down as one point.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Where's the dividing line?
Point one is plain language, if you like.
Yes.
Point two is, uh, insofar as language in any way ambiguous, ninety three, three and four is a strong pointer against my learning friends.
Yeah.
And, um, sorry, it's that terrible danger saying you've got two points and they're not being clear, which, which is where the one starts and the next one starts at the beginning. Um, in terms of the facts, I don't need to say very much at all. The main thing we need to look at, I think, briefly, or at least remind ourselves of, and I know you've already looked at it, is the letter, the critical letter. And to give it, put it, give it a little bit of context, if we go back to the letter which immediately precedes it. So that's at tab sixteen of the supplemental bundle. Um, you know, page two, two, four. That's my client's letter, my solicitor's letter before claim. Eighth September twenty twenty two. And we say, you've entered into a, you've entered into a development agreement, you didn't conduct an exercise under the regs, that's prima facie unlawful, it's an unlawful direct award, and that's encapsulated inter alia in paragraph four point eight, on page two, two, nine and over the page two thirty. Uh, in the section set, set out in paragraphs above, et cetera. Our client cannot see how L C C can argue that awarding the twenty nine July development agreement would be consistent with its obligations for the P C R. It has not carried out a fresh P C R compliant procurement exercise, does not appear to plan, rely on regulation thirty three, that's framework agreements. Or assert that the L R P P, which is elsewhere called the S P A, is a framework agreement. And in any event, it would be an unlawful one or an out of time one if it was. And it seems wholly implausible, say, to plan the twenty twelve procurement exercise. That's our case in a nutshell, it remains our case in a nutshell. And so the, we make, in a sense, two allegations, we say you entered into a development agreement. In fact, it turns out that's not uh, uh, within the meaning of the P C Rs, that's not in fact contentious. And you had no justification for doing so without conducting a procurement, a procurement exercise. That's it. And the pat reply, the twenty two September letter, is responding to that basic allegation. As I say, doesn't, it doesn't say we haven't got a development agreement. It says we have got a development agreement, but for reasons, the detail of which are not material to this field, we, we had a justification for not conducting an exercise. So it's, hey, so what the, just putting it in that way, what the twenty twenty, the September twenty, the pat reply letter, let's call it, is doing, is providing that council's justification for saying it can enter into the development agreement without conducting a procurement exercise, or without, therefore, publishing a call for competition. And that is indeed, and it's a long letter, as my learned friend says, it's perfectly detailed, I'm not taking issue about the detail. Whether it's coherent to a different matter, but that's not for today, it's detailed. Um. It, it, it's saying, what all of that is saying is, we do indeed have a justification for not doing it. And that letter is correctly characterized, and I don't think it's contentious, in my learning friend's skeleton at paragraph fifty five one, which you may or may not want to turn it up, C B core bundle twenty four, which says that, and I've quoted in skeleton as well, what the letter did is that it confirmed the conclusion of the D A, so we've entered into it, and provided a detailed summary of the reasons why the council was entitled to enter into the D A without conducting any further competitive tender process, in other, in other words, exactly what I've just said. So it's completely common ground, it does give, of course, it does give reasons, but the nature of the reasons which it gives are reasons developed, um, devoted to explaining why we don't need a procurement exercise. No one says, and it plainly did not, contain reasons that were directed to a candidate or tenderer within an extant procurement exercise. Now, I know that my learned friend raises a point, that he says his client is a candidate, that's new and I'll come back to it. But subject to that at least, no one is saying it contained reasons directed to a candidate or tenderer in an extant exercise. And of course, it couldn't have done so. It would be absurd for it to do so, because there wasn't an extant exercise, and hadn't been. And that one, the fact, is in a sense, all you need to know. With some hesitation and conscious that, um, it probably doesn't go to the critical legal issue, can I just very, very quickly pick up a few other points on the facts which arise after my learning friend's submissions? I mean, it's covering ground, it's been covered, I just. So there's correspondence, obviously, before all of this, you've been taken some of it, I should perhaps tell you, but I don't think it matters, that we haven't got all of the correspondence in this bundle, there was more, more than that, but nothing to ensue. Um, now, if we go, please, to page one, one, five in the supplementary bundle. This is, I think, the first bit of this correspondence we've got. This is a letter from the council, it's then lawyers who are shaking their martini, I think, oh no, shoot, Smith, sorry. Anyway, from the council to D L A. And they say in paragraph four, this is all in the context of, before the D A is entered into, of course, well before, but where it's contemplated it would be. Paragraph four. As regards our client's decision not to proceed with your client, considering development options, society was an important consideration for our client, it had control over the development, we could ensure it's developed to its specific requirements. As your client is aware, our client has an existing framework arrangement with their E W G. But then next sentence, as the framework agreement with E W G was procured in accordance with the P C Rs, our client can enter into development agreements. The only reason I draw attention to that is because there was a suggestion in my learned friend's argument that it was our case that the S P A, as it's called, the twenty twelve contract, is a developed agreement. That's not right, we were responding to what we understood at one point to be their case, now they've since resolved from it. But that's why, in the correspondence which follows, we're dealing with this suggestion that it could be a framework agreement saying it's unlawful. And it's since said it's not a framework agreement. And our basic case is, well, if it's not a framework agreement, there's no other species of framework anything that allows you to enter into new contracts, but again, that's. Now, just, sorry. Uh, and then I think we just pick up one, two, yeah, so the next. Uh, I don't think we need that, actually, that's what we're responding to on pages one, twenty and one, twenty one, but I didn't turn it up. And then one, two, five, I'll just pick up briefly, this is in the letter dated the thirteenth of March at tab seven. And this, I suppose, might be said, well, this is the first time they give us reasons, which are effectively, albeit in short form, a bit like the reasons they later give us in the, in the pat reply letter. Um, but of course, at this stage, and that's on page one, two, five at the top of the page in a nutshell. But of course, at this stage, no contract has been entered into. And there's no question of us seeking a declaration of ineffectiveness at this point, in relation, or any point prior to July twenty twenty two in relation to contracts.
But as far as time is concerned, we don't need to worry about that.
I don't think we do, I think we can focus on.
Very clear.
Yes.
It's the twenty second of September, that.
My lord, I respectfully agree, but I just thought I'd cover it off because there's been some suggestion it's that letter or some earlier letter, and I, it doesn't add, it doesn't add anything, because they're the same kind of reasons anyway, so it doesn't add. And then I've taken you to the pat and the pat reply, and again, this is very much a merit point, I don't suggest anything in terms of it, but I just feel I ought to raise it. And, um, if we look ahead to the correspondence which comes after the pat process. Um, we send a letter on the fourth of October, that's tab eighteen. And my lord, your husband, you have already picked this up, but on two, four, nine, we make the point that we have a number of months to issue the claim, that's on our understanding of the six months rule. That's page two, four, nine, bottom of the page, and in the response that comes just before, what they say is the expiry of the deadline, um, page two, five, two, but it's tab nineteen, because the number's not very clear, they don't say we're wrong about that. Now, that's a merit point, in a sense, if I'm wrong on the law, it may not matter. But insofar as a suggestion that we're somehow sitting on our hands, knowing there's a problem, we're doing, because we think we've got six months and no one's suggesting otherwise, and that's why, and, and because in, in circumstances where we think we've got six months, perfectly reasonable to ask for more information to try and get a better sense of how.
Incredibly unhelpfully, it says a number of months.
Well, it's not, sure.
It, 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 um, I mean, if, I think it is a complete jury point, but if the, if the point relates to, while there was no response to it, then that would have some legs if it had said six months pursuant to fifty five, uh, sorry, ninety three, whatever.
It would have more legs if it said that, I do respectfully say it's got some legs anyway, but in a sense, all I'm saying, because it doesn't turn, nothing turns on it, we're either right or wrong on the law. But, you know, perfectly legit, perfectly understandable why in circumstances where we think we've got longer, we go about trying to get, for example, the confidentiality ring sorted out, so we can get a better view of the strength of the claim before issuing, that's perfectly responsible way for a litigant to act. Um, if we had to, we had to, but we didn't, on our understanding. Um, so there's nothing particularly problematic, and of course, everyone knows where they stand in the meantime. That's all I want to say about, all I want to say about facts. Can I then go to the P C Rs, the Public Contracts Regulations, tab five? Now. P C Rs, of course, implement, you've certainly aware of this now, if you weren't before, EU law as it stood in relation to procurement in twenty fifteen, which was embodied in the then twenty fourteen, well, still actually, twenty fourteen procurement directive, that's at tab four, if we need to go to it. And then nineteen eighty nine, still nineteen eighty nine's remedies directive, um, which we can come back to as well, but I'll come back to those. Most of it, most of the organs can just focus on the wording of the regs. The basic requirement, forgive me if I'm telling you things you know very well. The basic requirement of the P C Rs, which is that a public, a contracting authority, a public body, must enter, must carry out a procurement exercise before entering into a public contract, is embodied in regulation twenty six. So if we can just turn that up, page forty seven, within this tab. When awarding one, when awarding public contracts, contracting authorities shall apply procedures which conform to this part, and this part is part two, I should have said. Part two is setting up procedures. You've got to do it. And two, specific prohibition, such contracts may be awarded only if a call for competition has been published in accordance with this part, except where regulation thirty two plus, no one says thirty two is relevant to us, so we can ignore that. And then just because effectively they become interchangeable, if we look down at eight, over the, on the page forty eight, there's a heading, calling for competition, it's all within the same regulation. The call for competition shall be made by means of a contract notice in accordance with reg forty nine, we don't have forty nine, that's just about the detail of how you do it, don't need to worry about it. So call for competition and contract notice are effectively the same thing. Uh, but we just want to be a little bit careful about that phrase, contract notice, because there's a separate concept of a contract award notice. Contract notice is if you start the process, contract award notice finishes it, but just be aware of it. Now then, given the submissions that have been made this morning, what follows is quite important. Because you'll have seen that reg twenty six was headed choice of procedures general, and then the following regulations set out the different procedures you can choose between. Reg twenty seven is open procedure. Um, and the basic characteristic of an open procedure you see in sub one, in open procedures, any interested economic operator may submit a tender in response to a contract. So if you like a one-stage process, publish a call for competition, contract notice. You just make a tender, that's it, and then you're a tenderer. I don't think we need to look at the definition of tender in any detail, but in essence, it's a person who submitted a tender, it's as simple as that, and it's now, at least, common ground what it means. But what follows is very important, given the submissions made this morning, which hasn't been made before. We go over the page, uh, to the next reg, I should say, reg twenty eight, restricted procedure. Sub one, and we'll see this is then reproduced in the following regs. In restricted procedures, any economic operator, uh, sorry, start that sentence again. Any economic operator may submit a request to participate in response to a call for competition, by providing the information for competition, et cetera. So a request to participate is something you do in response to a political competition. And so if we keep as it were a finger on that page, if you don't mind just flicking through the following, you get the same words in reg twenty nine. So this is competitive procedure with negotiation. In competitive procedure with negotiation, any economic, any economic operator may submit a request in response to a competition. You get the same words in thirty, which is competitive dialogue, and you get the same words in thirty one, which is innovation partnership. These are all species, I mean, although twenty eight is called restricted procedures, these are all, if you like, a species of restricted procedure, there are two stages. First of all, you submit your request to participate, and if you were then invited to tender in light of that, you submit your application, you submit your tender. Now, can we please then, keeping a, a hand on reg twenty eight, so say, now flip back to the definition of candidate? Because my learned friend submitted for the first time in these proceedings this morning, that my client was a candidate, not just a would be candidate, he's made that point before, but as I recall the hearing below, he expressly conceded they weren't an actual candidate, but he certainly didn't admit that they were an actual candidate, so let's look at the definition of candidate. A candidate, page forty one, I should have said, sorry. A candidate means an economic, economic operator that has sought an invitation or been invited to take part in a restricted procedure. So it's plainly the invitation, the request to participate that you, that is referred to in twenty eight, one, twenty nine, one and so forth. It doesn't say, either in twenty eight, one or in the definition, that a candidate is someone who's asked the authority to publish a call for competition, or asked the authority to carry out a procurement exercise. It's a request to participate, which is made in response to a call for competition. And my learned friend is right to say that you become a candidate as soon as you make that request, in other words, you don't have to get the response and be invited to participate. But there does have to be a call for competition to which you are responding, that is what a candidate is. And so the submission that my learned friend made for the, as I say.
Say that again, you have to do what?
You have, the, the request that you make in twenty eight, or the invitation you're seeking in the definition of candidate.
Yeah.
Is a response to a call for competition. It's not a request that the authority carries out a procurement exercise. It's a request that you participate in the procedure which the authority has advertised.
So you say, you, you have to make a request to participate in a procedure.
Yes.
It is not a request that the authority have a procedure.
Exactly, that's it, that's the point. And that just, it doesn't fit with the definition, with the way that twenty eight, one and then twenty nine, one and so forth are framed, and it doesn't fit with the definition in regulation two. Um. So it doesn't, and regulation, and the definition in particular, it doesn't say a candidate means an economic operator who has asked the authority to carry out a procedure or anything like that, it says has sought an invitation, or the invitation is the invitation that you receive in response to your request to participate. That's how, that's how it works. Um, as I say, this is not a point that was ever made below, which is why we were. Uh, it's not a point made, made in my learning friend's skeleton, we've double checked that. It's a completely new way of putting the case, but in any event, it's wrong. While we're on the definition of candidate and tenderer, can we now please pick up the definite, the earlier definition of candidate, well, candidate in particular, which you get in page, inter alia in page seven of tab one, and I've told you about the reg. So this appears, I should perhaps take you to page four first, this appears in page, in, in regulation thirty two of the two thousand and six P C Rs. There are completely analogous provisions in regulation thirty three of the U C Rs, which are in tab two, but we need to turn them up. And regulation thirty two or thirty three, as it may be, is the direct analogue, as I told you earlier, of regulation fifty five of the modern regulation. So in other words, this is the thing that says, when you're telling people, we'll come to fifty five, obviously, in more detail, but when you're, when someone asks you for reasons why you're unsuccessful, et cetera, you have to give them the reasons. But anyway, for present person, I just want to focus on the definition, on page seven. Candidate means an economic operator other than a tenderer, which applied what Roman won to be included amongst the economic operators to be selected to tend.
I'm very sorry, Mr. Beale, I was looking at something else.
Yeah, so on page seven, there's a, there's a heading sort of, two definitions, and the first definition, for the purposes of regulation, candidate. Means an economic operator other than a tenderer, which applied to be included amongst the economic operators to be selected to tender or to negotiate the contract, or to be a part of the framework agreement. Now, the wording's different, but for what, first a couple of points, first of all, for what it's worth, that plainly doesn't encompass someone who's just asked for a procedure to be conducted. It's about someone who's asked to be included in the exercise that has been published. Secondly, there's a slightly moot point, which I think we can leave as moot, but I just need to explain it, about whether my client was a candidate in twenty twelve, in relation to the earlier exercise. Now, the facts in relation to that, you've been told, and they're in paragraph fourteen of the witness statement, the council witness statement. The page reference, which I've written down, but someone will remind me, sorry. Um, which we probably don't need to turn up, but what it amounts to is, we did ask to be a candidate, sorry, we did ask to be, we did, we did ask to be included in the exercise, but we did so out of time. Now, it seems to me, and I don't think you need to decide it, and I don't have a strong view either way, that whether a person who applies out of time to be included in the exercise, thereby becomes a candidate, might be a moot point. But it doesn't matter. But, it doesn't matter, because look at the words that follow at the end of the definition. Does not include any economic operator which has been informed of the rejection of that application, the reasons for it. So either we were never a candidate, because applying out of time doesn't constitute an application, or insofar as applying out of time does constitute an application sufficient to make as a candidate, we ceased to be a candidate at the moment we were told that we, we were out of time, effectively. So either way, either we were briefly a candidate in twenty-twelve, or we, or we weren't, but if we were, we ceased to be within a period of a week or so, and we certainly don't continue to, we're certainly not one now, even under the old regulations, et cetera, in relation to the old exercise. So, that's in my submission, all quite important. The next provision we need to look at, going back to the twenty-fifteen regs, is fifty-five, and that's on page sixty-four. Page sixty-four, fifty-five one. Now, we're obviously focusing on two, but I think all of it's quite important, so, or at least one is quite important as well, so, inform, note the heading, informing candidates and tenderers. One, contracting authorities shall as soon as possible inform each candidate and tenderer, again, candidate and tenderer, not anyone else, of decisions reached concerning the conclusion of a framework agreement, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, including the grounds for any decision, A, not to conclude a framework agreement, B, not to award a contract for which there has been a call for competition, C, to recommence the procedure, four, not to implement a dynamic purchasing system. Now, we're not ultimately deciding what one means, but it's obvious in my submission that what one is assuming is that you've started the procedure, because that's why you have to tell them, notwithstanding the start of the procedure, you've decided, not effectively, all of A, B, A to D are all things where you've decided you've started the procedure, but you've not brought it, then you've changed your mind about it. You're not actually going to conclude the framework agreement, you're not going to award the contract for which there has been a call for competition, you're not going to recommence the procedure, that implies you have started the procedure and, you know, you're going to restart it, or not going to restart it, in this case maybe, or not to implement a dynamic purchasing system, well that implies you've started the process of having a dynamic. So on any view, the assumption of one is that there has been a call for competition. And of course, what Reg fifty-five does is that it takes its place, we haven't got the whole of Part Two of the PCRs, but it takes its place as one of a number of provisions of Part Two, which flesh out the procedure. So fifty-five is only a step in the process, in the procedure, I suppose I should say, that is advantaged in Part Two. If you haven't started the procedure, because you haven't published your call for competition, fifty-five has no, just looking at its place in the regulations, has no role to play. But in any event, then look at two, this obviously is important, very important to us. On request from the candidate or tenderer, so that's someone on my submission, certainly a tenderer is someone, to be a tenderer implies a procedure to be started, but a candidate, for the reasons I've given, also does. The contracting authority shall as quickly as possible, and in any event, within fifteen days from receipt of a written request, inform, A, and I don't know if we need to worry about B to D, but anyway, A, any unsuccessful candidate of the reasons for the rejection of its request to participate. Now, that's the phrase, request to participate, which we saw in twenty-eight one and the following provisions. And a request to participate is by its nature, something that you do in response to a call for competition. So there is no possible way, even if, which I submit is plainly wrong, even if my learned friend is right to say that my client was a candidate, because we just asked them to have a procedure, as opposed to participating in a procedure they'd advertised, that we could be given reasons for the rejection of our request to participate, because a request to participate is a request to participate in the advertised restricted or other procedures. And then, it's no longer an issue, but we're plainly not within B to D, because we can't be, and no one says we are, this is all about reasons why your tender has failed, or we haven't submitted one, or it's all about reasons why, you know, if you get as far as having an admissible tender, C is about, not only why you lost, but why the other person won, if I can put it like that, in a colloquial way, but that's, and then D is all about the ongoing process, so again, that's- So none of these are capable of being engaged on any possible reading of the language. None of these are capable of being engaged in a case where there's been no call for competition. Impossible. My lord, my lady, then, I think that's all we need out of Part Two of the regs, as it were, although they, you will infer, they go on for quite some time. You then start Part Three of the regs-
Sorry, just to understand-
Yes.
The, we get the context here at the bottom of this printout.
Sorry.
So-
Page sixty-four are you looking at?
Page sixty-four, down the bottom, it says, Part Two, Rules on Public Contracts-
Yes, yes, that's helpful.
Section five, Conduct of the Procedure.
Yes, that's helpful, yes. This is all in Part Two, which actually, I don't know if we've got the heading for somewhere in the bundles, but it's, Part Two is the procedures.
Possibly it does make a difference, so, looking at what we get down the bottom, it says, Part Two, Rules Implementing the Public Contracts Directive.
Yes.
Part Two, Rules on Public Contracts, Section Five. So what is the overall heading to Part Two?
Yeah, so it's, I've got the whole reg here, can I come back?
Yes.
I don't want to kind of try, you've probably got- I, I think we've put it in our skeleton, but I don't have to, but I think that potentially helps. So that's Part Two, and as I say, whatever the heading is, Part Two is under the procedure in it, the procedure you follow. Part Three is what happens, if we put it like this for now, what happens once you've decided, once you've chose, once you're the contractual contractor chosen. And there are two chapters to it, well, there may be more actually, but there's at least two chapters. Chapter Five is what you do to award the contract, it's about the standstill and so forth, I don't think we need to get too bogged down enough for now. And then, Chapter Six, which starts on page sixty-nine.
So this is under Part Three, Remedies?
Yes, well, it's Part Three, Chapter Six strictly, but yes. Do you see that, page sixty-nine, you are now into Chapter Six, and I think, I think the heading Remedies is actually, just double-check. Sorry. Remedies are heading to Part Two or are heading to Chapter Six? No, sorry, Part Three, I'd say my lord is right. Part Three is Remedies, Chapter Six of Part Three is Applications to the Court.
So, sorry, chapter-
Chapter, Part Three is Remedies.
Yes.
And then within Part Three, you've got Chapters Five and Six.
And Chapter Six is-
Chapter Six is Applications to the Court. Yeah. Yeah, and then chapter- Just double-check the other point while I'm-
Thank you.
Yes. Just for your notes, it's your, so, Part Two is headed Rules Implementing the Public Contracts Directive, and that in turn has a number of chapters, and the ones I've been, all of what I've been focusing on, twenty-six, et cetera, up to fifty-five, is all in Chapter Two of that, which is Rules on Public Contracts, Section Three, Procedures. It may be useful to give you, to give you a note on this, because that's what you should- Just to give you the structure, we'll give you a copy of the index or something like that, but come back to it if that's helpful.
So that's sort of, if we go back to page sixty-four-
Yeah.
Just reconciling that with what you just said.
Yeah.
The overall Part Two is Rules Implementing the Public Contracts Directive.
Correct, yeah.
Then it says Part Two again.
Yeah, I think it's gone a bit wrong, actually.
So is that supposed to be Chapter Two, or?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't, that doesn't look quite right, so can we, rather than me trying to guess, I'll, on this, I'm sure we can have an agreed, like, one, probably one paragraph note or whatever, just saying the headings as it were. All right, so if I come back to, then, Chapter Six, Applications to the Court. That's Chapter Six, Reg eighty-eight's interpretation. Reg eighty-nine, page seventy, duty owed to economic operators, and it's been amended for that following Brexit, so now it says from the UK and Gibraltar. And then, this regulation applies on a contracting authority to comply with the provisions of Part Two and Three, so there's a duty to comply, and that obligation is a duty owed to an economic operator. The significance that appears, when you then marry that up with Reg ninety-one, which is on page seventy-four, enforcement of duties through the court, a breach of the duty owed in accordance with eighty-nine, or, I'm remembering, but eighty-nine, is actionable by any economic operator which in consequence suffers or risks suffering loss or damage, and that's, if you like, the standing provision.
That's the hook, that's how-
Yeah.
That's the hook on which a, a claimant in a public agreement-
Can bring their claim, correct, yeah. That's what brings them a right, gives them a right to go to the court, that's why economic operators, people who aren't economic operators, or who, per IGT, people who weren't involved in the process, don't have standing to bring a claim, because they won't, that's, that's the hook. That's exactly right. But for present purposes, the critical point that I think is, well, critical may oversay it, quite an important point, is that of course, the people who therefore have a right to bring claims, and the only people who have a right to bring claims are economic operators. And that's of some contextual importance at least, because it follows that it's completely unsurprising that the remainder of the provisions of this part refer to economic operators throughout. Why? Well, they're the people to whom the time limits are relevant. If you're not an economic operator, then you can't bring a claim at all. So the time limits by their nature apply to economic operators and economic operators only. And you can see that point, for example, in Regulation ninety-two, which is over the page, this is the general time limit rather than the time limit we're concerned with, but that regulation repeatedly refers to the economic operator. Why? Simply because they're the people to whom the time limit is relevant, nothing more and nothing less, it's nothing, there's no, you can't read more into that word, that phrase, economic operator in Regulation Two, and I'm going to go on to make, I'll do it in ninety-three. Reg ninety-three is obviously critical, I'm going to just come back to it, can I just pick up a few other contextual features of the structure of this? So if we just flick ahead, ninety-four is about starting proceedings, then ninety-five tells you the contract making is suspended, so if you've already entered into the contract, no problem, if you haven't already entered the contract, you can't. And then the remedies are different, depending on whether a claim is issued before the contract has been entered into, or after, if it's before, then you can set aside, you can prevent the contract being entered into, and if, if it's after, you can't, subject to the declaration of ineffectiveness. That of course is why the DOI is so important, it's an exception to the rule that all you, if you, if you issue your claim after the contract's been entered into, you can only get damages, effectively. Just briefly then, on what the grounds for ineffectiveness are-
Which is the regulation where the contract has been-
So that's, sorry, that's ninety-eight, so ninety-seven, not entered, ninety-eight has been entered, and then that's subject to DOI, so that's ninety-nine, that's the structure. And then ninety-nine tells you what the grounds for ineffectiveness are, and the first ground is in, it's up to time on page eighty-four, I suspect you're following, but, first ground is in two, subject to paragraph three, I don't even need to worry about that. The first ground applies where the contract's been awarded without prior publication of a contract notice, notice. And of course, that's our case, we just say that straightforward, oh, we might be right, we might be wrong for, for other proceedings, but that's what we say. We rely on the first ground. The second ground, one needs to be aware that there is a second and a third ground, and I can probably focus for present purposes on the second ground. The second ground applies where the, now I'm now at the bottom of the page, sorry, should have said, sub-five. The second ground applies where all the following apply, and then it's where the contract's been entered into and breach of various requirements, I won't spell them all that, but the things like the standstill provision. So it's quite important to say that there will be cases where, this is the only point I think I need to get out of this for present purposes, there will be cases where a procurement exercise has been conducted, i.e. there's been a call for competition and everything that follows, but someone may have a reason and a valid claim for seeking a declaration of ineffectiveness. It's not the case that DOIs are only sought in cases where there's been no call for competition at all, and in interpreting it, I say that's of some importance.
The most common example of the second ground, though, is in the Rosemont case, where contracting authority goes ahead and enters into a contract, notwithstanding the stand-
Exactly, yeah, yeah, I mean, my lord, these cases-
Those are relatively rare.
They are.
So it is an exception, but-
Yeah, yeah, DOIs are relatively rare, I mean, cases where they go ahead and publish a contract, enter the contract, they're all relatively rare, there's a rep, that's right. But, but they're important, because as I think my lord reflected, reflected to my learned friend this morning, actually, those kind of cases are in a sense regarded by the European Court as the most serious cases of all, because they've gone, they've not followed the, not attempted to follow the basic rules.
That's, I never remember very many cases, but that's Stad Howl.
Yes, yes.
Which I do remember.
I don't remember it, but it's-
That's where they say that, and then it finds one of these interminable recitals.
Yes, my learned friend is much more, there we go.
I don't, I'm not swapping nerdy anecdotes.
Well, your logic does know the area better than me, but, yeah.
That, that, that bit of law, if you know-
It stays in, lodges in brain, it's like, there's one, I won't tell you what is, there's one case I can remember the full citation for without having to, certainly, I won't bother telling you. So, so that's the structure into which we come back to ninety-three, so if we just do that.
And, and so, just so we're clear-
Yeah.
This, this case, this claim-
Yes.
Arises under ninety-nine, uh, uh-
Two.
Three and-
Two and following, yeah.
Well, two is the first ground, and then, slightly off, two.
I think it's two, I think, I may be wrong, but I think it's just, I think it's straightforward to two.
Yeah, fine.
I think that's good enough. And, and therefore the first ground of ineffectiveness is called in the reg. So with that all in mind, if we then go back to ninety-three, page seventy-seven, the basic structure of course is not an issue. Special time limits for seeking, and I'll call it DOI, this regulation limits the time within which proceedings may be started when the preceding seeking DOI, so this is the applicable one, not any other one, don't worry about ninety-two, don't worry about date of knowledge, this regulation doesn't use that concept. Two tells you the basic rules, so it's either thirty days where three or five, I won't read the whole thing out, you've seen it, where three or five applies, thirty days from the day after, during the date, and otherwise it's six months. And bearing in mind my learned friend's submissions about rapidity and so forth, I mean, I'm not denying there's a principle of rapidity, but obviously that doesn't, that doesn't cut across the basic point, that there is nevertheless a six-month long, long stop, I mean, consistently with the principle of rapidity, the EU legislator and now the UK legislator implementing it chose to give a six months, I mean, I say that, UK legislator at the time didn't have a choice, but anyway, they're implementing it correctly. And then in my submission, the two exceptions to the six-month rule, and you know why I say this in a sense already, are both important, because the first exception is three, or three and four red together, and the second appears as five and six, and if we just look at three and four for a moment, this paragraph applies where a relevant contract award notice, and remember, I've got to be careful about in terms of contract notice and contract award notice, but, but it's got to be not just a contract award notice, it's got to be a relevant contract award notice, has been published on the UK notification, so, in which case the relevant day is the day after the date. So you publish your notice, and then you get your thirty days. What do you have to do in the notice, that four tells us that, for that purpose, a contract award notice is relevant if and only if the contract was awarded without prior publication, so it's a case where you've done it without publishing the, without going through the procurement exercise, and the contract award notice includes justification of the decision of the contracting authority to award the contract without prior publication of the contract notice. I didn't say the word reasons, but that's obviously, in other words, why do you, why does the authority believe it's entitled to do it? without, um, without going through a procurement exercise? So if the reasons which were sent in the letter of the twenty two of September, or indeed probably some rather more attenuated reasons, possibly the reasons that might, have been put on the U, UK notification service, um, in a contract award notice, we'd get the thirty days. But of course, critically, my client would know it had thirty days. And indeed, my, look at the, with paragraph seventeen of the witness statement, the counsel's witness statement. The counsel didn't do it because it would prompt us to bring a claim. But in a sense, that's the purpose here. The purpose of, the, the quid pro quo is you publish the notice with the reasons, you make completely clear to all the world what you have done. And you take the risk of prompting a challenge sooner than it might otherwise come. But you get the benefit of thirty days instead of six months. Completely comprehensible, um, completely comprehensible purpose. And indeed, in, in, in the court below, my lady friend made a submission that, um, well, we didn't do it because doing this, doing this would have been a red rug to a bull, my client being the bull. Uh, and I submitted in response, well, yes, in a sense, that's, that's the purpose. It's supposed to be a red rug to a bull. You hold up your red, your red rag and you say, well, come and get us if you want, if you want to. And if you do, you do, but you've got to do it within thirty days, and if you don't, you don't.
So since this is a contract award notice, you're not inviting anybody to do anything at all.
No.
But you're saying.
This is what I've done.
And I've warned you in effect.
Yeah, this is what I've done. If you think I've got it wrong, here's your chance. But because I've published it, there's lots of people who are, you know, interested in these things, will monitor, no doubt, the notification service. Um, you know where you stand and you've got to do in thirty days, not six months. Perfectly understandable.
And is that reflective of what has been described as rapidity? It's not a concept.
Yeah, exactly. Well, it's, it's a slightly, I don't know, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I don't know if the word rapidity appears in the regulation. But you, we all know what you mean. I mean, in other words, it's the idea that you have to, it's a context, this is sometimes said about judicial review, although the time limit's a bit longer. It's a context where people need to know where they stand, and therefore the policy of the, the rule is that you have to act quickly. And that principle, which I'm perfectly happy to accept, runs throughout the regulation, the regulation and the directive. It's given effect to in various different ways. In regs, in Reg ninety three, it's got to be balanced with the points that my Lord, Lord Justice Coulson was making this morning, that if you don't do something, people may not know you've entered the contract at all, so that's why you've got the six month long stop. But he enables, so, because you can think of a range of circumstances. You can think of the case where an authority just doesn't realise it's done anything wrong at all. So presumably it's not then going to go around publishing this because it's got no sense that it might need to. But you can also think of, and then it's six months because there'll be no publication and no public knowledge. But you can think of the cases where the local authority, or sorry, the contracting authority, gets advice, it says, well, we think we can do it. We can see where contrary argument view could be taken, we'll protect, we'll both take a risk but protect our position in the longest, by publishing our reasons explaining what our position is. And then someone else. And that's giving effect to, to rapid, rapidity. That's precisely the purpose.
What do you say to the, um, argument that was developed this morning?
Yeah.
That, well, um, it wasn't actually, in that, not doing a notice wasn't aimed at your clients because it was said, well, we told them why they, why we weren't having a competition in any event, no later than twenty second of September. And actually, this was designed to prevent others.
Well, does that, I mean, that's pretty, that's pretty, frankly, pretty, what's it, what I'm searching for? It, it's not very salutary, frankly. Because what they're basically saying is, we, we tried to pick and choose. We knew this person was going to do it, so we sent them a letter, but we didn't publish the thing. And if we didn't flag up that we thought ninety three five applied, but we, we thought it better in relation to all the others who might be out there, not to take the risk of publishing the notice. Because although that would get rid of the six months, it would alert them to, to the problem which otherwise wouldn't arise. And as I say, if, I mean, I, I do say, I mean, not, choosing to not publish the notice for those, for those, if you like, tactical reasons, picking and choosing is not consistent. But I don't say it's, the regulation says what it says. Certainly not consistent with ideas of equality and treatment and transparency, which is supposed to run throughout this, this regulation, these provisions. It's treating people differently. Saying, well, pick off this person this way, and we'll pick off this person that way. Or this, this economic operator this way, and this economic operator that way. So the critical point is, anyway, is that three and four expressly cater for the situation we're concerned with here. They wanted to engage for thirty days, all they had to do was do that. Give us reasons or probably shorter reasons than the ones they gave us. We'd have known where we stood, and they would have known where they stood. If we brought the claim within thirty days, which no doubt we would, because we've been talking about doing it for ages, well, so be it. And if we, but if we didn't, they'd be protected. If we didn't feel confident enough in the meantime, saying that would have happened, but it might have done, then they'd have got their protection. There's no hardship to them, other than doing something which one would have thought would be consistent with the policy, if, if, policy of transparency. Because if they're right, if they're right in their position, they were allowed to do this without notice, why are they worried about other people bringing claims? Rather suggest they weren't very confident about it, frankly, but I mean, that's the true. So that's three and four. That's one of the two limbs to get the thirty days. Then we go, uh, yes, I do mean three and four. And then we go to five and six. This is the other limb. So you've read it quite a lot, so I went, I'll come back to the particular language, let me just make some general points about it first. This, of course, applies on any view to an equally obvious, in an equally obvious way. Query whether it applies to our situation, but there's another situation which it clearly applies to. That's a situation where the second ground of ineffectiveness is in play. And the contracting authority can ensure that it voids the six months and gets the thirty days by giving the candidates and tenderers who would otherwise be able to seek a declaration of ineffectiveness on the second ground notice effectively that it's going to be thirty days. So again, it's engaging the principle of rapidity, dealing with a different situation. And I don't think my learning friend says it doesn't apply to that category of case. And so if one pauses there, one might think one has a completely clear overall structure. Six months, two exceptions. One is ground one of ineffectiveness. No, no contract notice, but you think you're entitled to. Two is, um, we have sent you the relevant reasons, so you shouldn't get the, you shouldn't get the three or six months. And my learned friend's argument, quite apart from language, is seeking to say, well, despite the fact that three and four are obviously catering to the first situation, and four and five, sorry, fo, five and six are obviously catering to the second situation, nevertheless, you should, and I do say it involves a real stretch of language, but even if I'm wrong about it, we nevertheless, you should bend five and six or interpret five and six to cover the, to overlap with the first one. That's a very odd way of construing this regulation in my submission, even if the language permitted it, which I shall.
And you're, and you're probably just about to explain this, but just so I understand it, so if we take a specific case, you say a, a second ground case, so contract has been entered into, it is said.
Yeah, so what would happen?
The standstill.
Yes. So in other words, what's happened is, they've made, they've conducted their procurement exercise, may or may not be valid, done it in a valid way. Then what, the way the standstill works, without going into the detail of it, is what the standstill does is, it says you can't then enter into the contract for such and such a period, the purpose of which is to make sure that this whole part of the regulations works. So in other words, the people have the opportunity to bring their claim before the contract's entered into, so they can get the other remedies. Um, but the authority doesn't wait that long. So it's now in a situation where the contract's been entered into, therefore, the argument go, therefore, they're prevented from getting their ordinary remedies except aside under ninety seven, I think it is. They can still get their DOI because you've breached the standstill. To do it, on the face of Regulation ninety three two B, they would potentially have six months. But because, notwithstanding the breach of the standstill, the per, the, I shouldn't say the person, the, the economic operator has been told of the relevant reasons why it's lost, it's required to act more quickly.
So in this context, you definitely can pick people off.
Well, yeah, but it's important why you can pick people off. Because of course, in the first, that's right, that, well, yes, but if you're doing it proper, well, you, you can, but there's a kind of caveat to that. First of all, there's a reason why you, the first one is to all the world, and the second one's to, to, to individuals. Because the first one is, of course, in the context where you've got no candidates and tenderers in the frame. So you've got, all the world could potentially, provided they offer services, bring a claim. So that's why you need to publish to all the world. You don't know who it, in advance, who it is that it would apply to. Whereas the second context is because of my lord's, inter alia because of my lord's judgment in IGT, we don't need it for these purposes. If you haven't, you, uh, someone who, someone who didn't participate in the process up till then will lack standing. And so there's a relatively limited pool. So that's, in a sense, why you can pick people off. And of course, if you're conducting the process properly, other than, other than not obeying the standstill, or it may be otherwise, arguably not obeying the standstill, you ought to be sending these reasons to them anyway. So it's not a, it's not a hardship. And it's not surprising, and, and, oh, sorry, there's one other point. And of course, the relevant reasons, if I'm right about the way fifty five works, the relevant reasons will be right, different in each case. Because the reasons why one candidate or tenderer will have failed won't correspond to the reasons why the other candidate or tenderer will have failed. So you can't actually give a, to all the world notification because for each candidate, they'll have failed for a slightly different reason. Whereas, of course, in a three, reg three, sorry, sub reg three and four situation, the relevant contract award notice, the reasons are the same for all the world. The reason why you don't have to carry out the exercise are the same for everyone. And of course, it's striking, therefore, that the reasons we were given, which are said to come with all of this, in that letter, were not reasons that was, in a sense, specific to us. It's nothing about us. It's about the, it's about the general entitlement they have.
So ju, just again, I mean, I'm only taking the, one aspect of.
No, no, of course.
The second issue, but just thinking it through. So you conduct your procurement exercise, you decide to go with a particular tenderer.
Yeah.
Um, the standstill bites.
Yes.
Um, at that point, you're supposed to inform candidates and tenderers.
Yeah. Yeah, you're supposed to do it under fifty five anyway, but, yeah.
And at that stage, you do it under fifty five one, do you?
Um, I think you might, I mean, there are actually quite a few of these obligations.
Regulation eighty six, isn't it?
Yeah, you've also, you've also got to do it under eighty six, so.
Oh, I see.
There's that, this is why I'm.
Yes, I see.
There's actually a couple of different places we have to do it, but they all come to much the same thing, so. You have to do it more than once.
But at, at Areg, you have, you have across the board to tell people what the outcome is, do you?
Yeah, I mean, you, you have, you always have to tell people, well, sorry, at least in cases where you've got past the stage of, so you're going to pub, you're going to do lots of different things, and I'm not sure without, I'm not even sure we have all the regulated. You've got to publish your contract award notice, and that will say who's won. So you saw an example of that.
Yes.
In relation to twenty twelve, thirty is one. Then with the individual candidates and tenderers, you've got to comply with the various detailed requirements of notification, which without being too, getting too bogged down, might be different for tenderers and candidates. So.
I see, yes.
Tenderers, what, tenderers who've submitted a admissible tender is fifty five two C, for example.
But, but all of that is on request, is it?
Uh, some of it, some of it is, and some of it isn't.
I see. Because I was thinking it might be like, say, when you apply for a job, you get your rejection.
Yeah.
And you don't necessarily get any reasons, but you could ask for reasons, and then you'll give.
If you're applying to be a part-time judge, I can tell you, the quality of the reasons you get depends on how far through the process you've got, so there you go.
But, but, but there's some parallels there. You, you, you sort of automatically, in one way or another, are told the outcome.
Yeah, you always get the outcome. You always know you haven't got it.
But if you want reasons, you have to ask for them.
You have to ask for them, yeah, yeah, broadly, that's right. But anyway, you can see therefore, I mean, I don't know.
Here, on your case.
Yeah.
Under five, um, there's a positive obligation.
Yes.
If you want, if you're the contracting authority and you want to trigger the thirty days.
Yeah.
Then you give the information whether it's been requested or not, because if you're giving the relevant reasons, then you're fixing it in time.
And that, of course, is the conditionality point. So now let's focus on the precise.
So just developing that a moment longer, so your, the standstills come into effect. It's said that you've contracted before the end of the standstill period. At that point, even if tenderers, candidates have been told the outcome, they may not yet have requested the reasons.
Maybe, maybe not.
Uh, and that's why, in that particular context, it makes sense to say, well, if you want to trigger the thirty days, you've got to get on and give a reason.
That's right. And, and as I say, of course, the re, as I say, I think it is quite important. Bearing in mind the difference between three and four on the one hand, and five and six on the other, it is quite important. The nature of the reasons under five and six are going to be, if you like, case specific.
Yes.
Whereas the nature of the reasons in three and four are going to be, all, the same for everyone who could be affected by it. It's why we're allowed to do it, not why you got. So if we just then focus on the particular words of five and six, this paragraph, let's, back on page seventy seven, if anyone's trained away from it, probably. This paragraph applies where the contracting authority is informing the economic operator of, A, the conclusion of the contract. And obviously, that means you've got to have concluded the contract. So that's why we couldn't have brought a claim in twenty twenty. Or certainly, this wouldn't have been engaged in twenty twenty. And B, a summary of the relevant reasons. And, and if you've done that, then the day is the day after you give the relevant reasons, that's fine. But of course, the whole issue is, what do we mean by the relevant reasons? Complete, in my submission, completely clear, the relevant reasons are, or sorry, means, the reasons which the economic operator would have been entitled to receive in response to a request under Regulation fifty five two. But that's completely clear. You've got to be entitled to receive the reasons. What, what's the conditionality about? It's about whether or not you've made the request. So it's saying, if you made the, if you're the sort of person who, if you make the request, you're entitled to the reasons, then the fact you haven't made the request doesn't matter. That's all that the conditionality, the would have been, is doing. What is plainly not.
So you say you, you get here what you would have got if you'd requested.
If you asked. And of course, some people will have asked. But whether or not you ask, you can, the authority can give the reasons. And that, that makes perfect sense if you think about the broader policy, the purpose of all this. Because if it didn't have that bit of conditionality in it, then an economic operator who could be bound by the thirty days could avoid it applying to them by not making the request. Whereas, um, what this ensures is that whether or not they make the request, provided the authority gives them the reasons, voluntarily, as it were, if they don't make the request, the regulation bites. That's all.
Voluntarily, yes, but voluntarily in order on your.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
To trigger the thirty days.
Voluntary, yeah, that's right.
There's a.
There's a quid pro quo. Yeah, 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 absolutely. Yeah, it's not a complete, it's not proven, provenance is the right word, please.
In a sense, it's a sort of quality mark of the reasons, isn't it? It's a standard for the reasons.
Yes, I think that's probably right. But what the conditionality is not doing, in my submission, plainly not doing, is what my learned friend starts to suggest. It's, it's the reasons where you would have been, you, the economic operator, would have been entitled to. If we, the contracting authority, had conducted a procurement exercise which we haven't conducted, and you had then requested reasons and all the rest of it. And, sorry, we had conducted procurement exercise, you had applied under the procurement exercise, tender, tender, whatever. And then we, and then we told you no, and then, and then, and then, and then you asked for reasons. That's an awful, that's a lot of conditionality. And of course, it depends on conditionality, not only in relation to what the economic operator does, but in relation to things the contracting authority doesn't do.
And, and on your case, if you then, if you, if you did look beyond that fifty five two A, what you would be required to provide is the reasons for the rejection of your request to participate.
So this is the final one. So even, exactly. So even if I'm wrong about all that, about conditionality, it doesn't make, it can't make any sense. Because you go back to fifty five, let's just turn it up again. Come full circle in a sense, sorry to put it around, but we go back to page four. The only one that's said to be potentially engaged now is A. So you've got to be given the reasons for the rejection of your request to participate, which you haven't made, could not have made because there was no call for competition. et cetera. I mean, it's, sorry, it's pretty, pretty extraordinary to suggest that that's how it works. It's pretty, it's very simple. This applies to a second ground of ineffectiveness case. You can see, because the first ground of ineffectiveness case is already indicated for in three and four. The conditionality is limited to, um, sorry, lost track. One sec. Yeah, we, yeah. The reasons you would have been entitled to, if you asked, assume you're otherwise entitled to them. That's what the conditionality is about. And what you get are the reasons why effectively you lost. I mean, I might paraphrase, but you, you, why your, why your request to participate was rejected, why your, and so forth. That's a perfectly simple, coherent overall structure, which in my respectful submission, follows plainly from the language without doing violence to it. And the contrary submission, which my learned friend makes, A, doesn't make any sense. And B does extraordinary violence and requires all sorts to the language and requires you to entertain all sorts of strange hypotheticals. So you've got to imagine reasons being given in relation to requests that wasn't made because it couldn't be made because the contracting authority.
Just standing back from it.
Yes.
Since there's no debate about the sufficiency of reasons.
Yes.
It does lead to this result, doesn't it? That a, 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 a economic operator in the shoes of your client has all the relevant information that it requires to bring a claim.
Yeah.
But a far longer period to bring that claim and therefore potentially much greater economic threat.
Yeah, it does.
Because of the, because on your case, because of the wording of the.
Yeah, well, it already does, but there's a, this is why we get back to three and four and it's critical. It does, but the authority that's concerned about that has an answer. It publishes its relevant contract award notice under, under three and four and it's, and that, and that falls away. Simple as that. It could, it could and probably should do it on the day that it enters the contract, the day after, just as it would do in any other case. So yeah, I mean, you're, you're right. Because they, we, we, we had six months because they didn't do what they could have done in three and four, and that's right. And what it's worth is to our benefit because, um, be, because, because we were able, I mean, to our, not, to our benefit, not necessarily to the detriment of the other side, but to our benefit in the sense that we were able to ask for more information, we were able to agree the confidentiality ring in advance of lodging the claim. Maybe if we, maybe if we'd been satisfied by what we saw in the confidentiality ring, we wouldn't have brought the claim. So there's a potential, there are some advantages to both sides. But I mean, the answer is, insofar as that's, ought to be, in some notions, that's unfair or problematic, the remedy was in their hands, always in theirs. And we know why they didn't do it. They didn't want to prompt claims by anyone else, which is with respect, not very salutary. And as I say, but I mean, that's in a sense by the by. I mean, the wording, I do respectfully, I mean, I say two things, I suppose. I say fundamentally, the wording is sufficiently clear. You just don't get into these sort of other clues about purpose and context, which might lead you to choose one over another, or the two ambiguous interpretations. But I also then say, actually, if you turn back, the, the scheme is completely coherent and the sorts of problems that said could arise just don't arise once you've understood how it works as a whole. Can I, with that in mind, if that's, I mean, unless there's any questions about that, whatever. Just remind you, and I'm sorry to, oh, sorry. Of course, my love, yes.
I haven't got a question, but I've got a note to me.
Yes, of course.
To myself.
Yes, of course.
I have to say, one great thing, now you have live streaming. You're writing a judgment and do you think, what did counsel say?
You go back and watch it.
Watch the recording.
Well, as counsel, it worries that one's clients might be watching when you're judging your performance. I'm just. For those two who might tell, shall I say the next page I'm going to is tab nineteen in the authority bundle. I know my lord is still making notes. Which is a very well-known authority.
Sorry.
So it's tab nineteen, my lord. This is the P R B C case in the Supreme Court, nothing to do with procurement, of course. It's a very well-known authority. Can I just say this without intending any criticism or anything? I realised yesterday that of course, we don't have reported copies of any of these judgments. And it's pretty obvious there are going to be reports of Supreme Court cases.
Twenty two three, appeal cases two five five.
If you want them, we've got extra copies of the reports, but I'm, it's supposed to say that. For now, I'm just gonna, we'll give you at the end, if you want a hard copy of that, we'll give it to you, but.
I suspect at the end of the hearing would be helpful to have.
Yeah, let's stick with what we've got for now and then you can take, take it away. So it's a very well-known passage, so it's, I'll go straight to it. It's paragraph twenty nine in the judgments, which I think is Lord Hodge. So that's five O two of the bundle. The courts in conducting statutory interpretation are seeking the meaning of the words which parliament used. Per Lord Reed in an earlier case, sorry, Lord Nichols had said in another case, statutory interpretation in the next one is required to identify the meaning borne by the words in question in the particular context. And he goes on to say, context, internal, what I call internal context. So the kind of structure of the legislation, so it can, can be important. Para thirty, external aids, the things that aren't apparent on the face of legislation, less important, but not, not irrelevant. But the reason I draw attention to that extremely well-known passage is it does emphasise the primacy of the language. And in my respectful submission, maybe this is a, maybe there's a bit of response to this, the suggestion of we were an actual candidate, but I've addressed why that's wrong. That aside at least, when you ask my learned friend, well, how do you explain how he gets to a different result? It's really, it's one thing to say, well, you interpret it widely because its policy means you've got to cover this situation. It's very difficult to explain how the combined words of ninety three, five, six and fifty five two could apply to the situation in my submission. It's never been, certainly from my perspective, it's never been satisfactorily explained, although it's not me to him, it has to be explained. So it's the language. The language in my submission is perfectly clear, my submission. So if I just, with that observation, then just remind myself where I've got to. Yeah. I mean, I've slightly taken this mission in a different order, but in my submission therefore, the overall structure of these regulations is clear. Ninety three, five, six months applies, ninety three, five applies to one set of situations, it's the second ground of ineffectiveness. Perfectly clear, it does, no one says it doesn't apply to that, so perfectly understandable. Ninety three, three applies to the very situation we're concerned with if the, if the authority has chosen to avail itself of it. And therefore no need to ban the language. You have, I think you have the submissions that I want to make about it. And if you just kind of apply that back to the facts then of this case, I've, I've characterised what the, the twenty two September letter did. It didn't give any of the kinds of reasons in fifty five two. In particular, it wasn't a rejection, it wasn't giving reasons why our request to participate, which is necessarily a request made in the sense to a public, to a contract notice that I've shown you, was rejected. It was given reasons why they didn't have to have a. It's not a, it's not a problematic or surprising result for all the reasons I've given. Those, I think then are my, if you like, my central positive submissions. There's some points to sweep up, which my learned friend has made, which I think I ought to deal with this. At least briefly. So, and I think the ones I've got are Alstom, the Procurement Act, query whether that's still live at all, I don't think. And a point about logical consequences in the scales, which I'll come back to, which was repeated in a different way today.
If those, if those points don't deal with the point about the definition of candidates can include hypothetical or would be candidates.
Well, it didn't say would be can, well, let me take that.
I understand that, but what, what, what. Looked at some earlier regulations which talked about.
Sure.
Contractors who would have wished to.
Yes.
What, 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 what do you say about the?
Well, it's quite important. When my learned friend was making those submissions, he was making them on the sort of understanding or the common understanding between the, between hi, 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 himself and the court. That, that, there wasn't a definition of candidates or tender, tenderer in the earlier regulations. Actually, once you see that there was such a definition, as I've shown you, the provisions he was referring to are broadly speaking the analogue to an economic operator. So let me just turn it up. It's in I G T, I think. I must say where it is. But again, it wasn't suspicion in the skeleton, I don't think. So, yeah, so he, he drew your attention. It's five, six, eight of the authorities bundle. Page five, six, eight, tab twenty one.
Paragraph.
Paragraph seventy two.
Yeah.
Continue your lordship's judgment. And it says, an economic operator, that's as I said, the modern phrase, the twenty fifteen phrase, was defined in regulation four as a contractor, a supplier or a service provider. And then, and then there's a definition which your lordship sets out of contractor. But contractor here, I mean, I've got to be careful about the idea of the analogue because the regulations were different. But broadly speaking, the structure is, you've got candidates and tenderers and that's reproduced in the new ones, albeit with a slightly wider scope. You've got contractor, et cetera, which is reproduced as economic operator in the new regs. So contractor, so the meaning of contractor, a person who would have wished to, et cetera, isn't, isn't to be equated with candidate in the new regs. It's to be equated with economic, if it's to be equated with anything at all, you've got to be careful about doing it. But my learned friend's argument depends on equating it in some sense. But if we're going to equate it with anything, it's a clue as to what is meant by economic operator. Now, obviously, one can see why, if you've got economic operator, which is the basic standing requirement, the person to whom the duty is owed and so forth, it goes wider than candidates and tenderers. And indeed, this kind of case is a really good example. Because in a case where there hasn't, hasn't been but should have been a procurement exercise, that's what we say this is. If you interpreted the standing requirement to mean only the people who were candidates or tenderers, then no one would ever be able to bring the claim, which can't be possibly be right. So, so we are, we are of course a person who would have wished to be involved in a procurement exercise. That's why we bring this claim, because we say there should be one. That's the nature of our complaint. And that makes us, I suppose, we probably were a contractor if the old regs applied and we are certainly an economic operator of the new regs. But what we're not, equally plainly, is a candidate. Because a candidate is someone who submits a request to participate. That's, does that answer?
Yeah, that's, that's clear.
So if I then come back to the other points that I identified, sorry, I hadn't made a note to deal with that because it wasn't, I don't actually do anything. So Alstom first, that's tab thirteen. Again, I've got a copy of the report, but let's work from the non-report for now, the transcript for now. My learned friend's taken you to it. So, well, you've done some pretty fundamental discrem above what it decides. So I think paragraphs, I think we both relied on paragraph one and five as kind of setting the context. So if we just remind, without reading them out, I'll just remind you of the one and five. What it demands to is, this is a case where Alstom, there was a procurement exercise, there was a call for competition, et cetera, and a procedure. Alstom bid, they submit, I think, a tender. I don't know if it was restricted or not, doesn't matter. They get as far as submitting a tender. They lose out to Siemens. So they bring a claim. There's then some complications, in fact, we needn't worry about too much about, they bring a second claim and so forth, but that's, I don't think that matters. And, um, and the question is whether their later claim is within accordance with the thirty. They then later seek a declaration of ineffectiveness. The question is whether the relevant reasons, thirty days are all supplied. Now, it's the relevant reasons in reg thirty three of the old regs. There are some minor differences, but as we've seen, that refers to candidates or tenderers in the same way. That's what he's talking about. And there's some assumptions which have to be made about who would have won or lost because of the nature of the side of candidates, but I didn't, I can say something about that. And if you then with that in mind, but sorry, just to pause and just make the absolutely critical point. There is therefore a procurement exercise. This is not a no call for competition case at all. And we see from paragraph sixty four summarising, on page three hundred, summarising the descendants submissions as to why limitation did apply, why, why there was a limitation problem. That some reasons which purported to be directed to why Alstom lost in the procurement exercise were given. So in other words, it's not a case where Alstom was given reasons why a procurement exercise wasn't needed, which is our case. It's a case where Alstom was given reasons which purported to be, I'll come back to why I say purported in a minute, but at least purported to be reasons why Alstom had lost. What does Alstom say therefore? Well, that's summarised in sixty five on page three hundred. We should probably note at least all three, but we need to focus on the second one. So Roman one, the summary has to be in a sort of formal identifiable form. Well, if they were right about that, that would answer the case, but they were wrong, see paragraph sixty six. It's not, not, we don't need to worry about that. I perfectly have to accept that it has to be in a formal form. The problem is, there have to be the right kinds of reasons. Roman, if I then skip on to Roman through, three, this is the point about adequative reasons. They were saying there, there's such rubbish reasons that you can't. And, and that was rejected. And again, I, as you expressly make clear, I'm not making that point. I've never made that point. So we don't need to worry about that bit. Then the middle submission, that's made, that's made by Miss Hannaford, goes back to their basic argument in the claim. So their basic argument in the claim, either substantive argument, is that although a procurement exercise had been conducted, the contract which was eventually awarded wasn't referable to that procurement exercise. And, and of course, the judge was required to assume that that was right or could, could, or anyway, could be made out at trial for the purpose of considering limitation. It's a strikeout. And this gives, this is why I think my learned friend makes, seeks to rely on this, because he says, well, you've got to assume that, I think this is how he would put it, you've got to assume that although there was a procurement exercise and although there were relevant reasons in relation to that procurement exercise, the contract was awa, that was awarded, was awarded without a call for competition. That's, so, and I suppose if the judge had reasoned it differently, it might give some support to my learned friend's submission, but we need to see how the judge did reason. And that's really paragraph sixty nine, which has been read to you, so I don't want to read it all out. It's a very long paragraph. I just focus on parts of it. And I, can I ask you to read the whole thing? But given you've already read it once, I won't pause for that at this stage. So paragraph sixty nine, three O one. Reg three, thirty three, so remember, for reg thirty three, Dan reads fifty five now. Is about the provision of necessary information. It applies when his decision has been made towards the contract. The contract is, in my view, the contract which the utility has been telling the relevant commercial world it's minded to enter into. And is the contract which apparently conforms to the proposed contract for which it called for competition. But these reasons are immediately being linked to the fact there was a call for competition. The tenderers and candidates referred to are those who were tenderers and cand, candidates for that contract. So if I need to, I positively do rely on that. Express, that's our case in a nutshell. We weren't, we, there couldn't be in our case because that's the effect of the definitions contained in paragraph fourteen and we've looked at the equivalent definitions in thirty two, fourteen of the P C Rs, three thousand and six. The provision of such information is a vital part of the control mechanism. Tenderers and candidates, not anywhere else, are entitled to assume that once they're part of the process, they will get the information referred to in, once they are, sorry, I just, once they are part of the process, well, we weren't because we never got that far, they will get the information referred in reg forty three two. And then to save time, I won't read out the next few of it because it will take too long. But if I can pick it up over the page, there's a sentence beginning, it is much more likely. Uh, there's a sentence beginning, it is much more likely. It is much more likely to have been its intention, that's the, that's the legislator. That the contract referred to is the contract which has apparently resulted from the previously announced procedures and therefore ostensibly at least which the unsuccessful candidates and tenderers saw they were competing for. If that is right in relation to the announcement in reg thirty three one, then the same chain, which is the analogue of fifty five one, then the same chain follows um, in relation to now, uh, sorry, through the remaining parts of the regulation, para two works well unintelligibly, so does para nine. It implies in favour of an economic operator who was unsuccessful, and that means unsuccessful in condition. It was unsuccessful in relation to the tender it submitted, in relation to the overall process it was participating in. It may be that as a matter of analysis, the eventual contract falls to be treated, this is the assumption of the strikeout, falls to be treated a- as a contract beyond the scope of that process, but that is no reason to go back and treat there as being two parallel processes going on at material terms for the purpose of regulation thirty three. So what the judge is deciding, and you'll read the rest, I'm sure, in due course, but what the judge is deciding is regardless of the assumption he's required to make as to the success of the claim, for the purposes of reg thirty three as it then was, and whether relevant reasons were given, he must treat the reasons that were given as referable to the con, to the process that had been conducted. He's absolutely not saying you can have relevant reasons without a call for competition to which they are related. He's saying, or at least assuming, I suppose, that you can't, but the relevant reasons were referable to the call for competition, which is in, which is in the background of the whole case. So the authority provides absolutely no support in my submission for the quite different situation we have in this case, that you can have relevant reasons without any tender process or any call for competition. That is absolutely not what's being said. Far from it. I mean, I don't need to rely on this. I mean, of course, it's a first instance decision and it's very different facts, so clearly what the court appeal wants to do with it, but for what it's worth, so all of those paragraphs which I've, all those passages which I've read out and which I rather emphasise in doing so tend to support my case. It's all about tenderers and candidates, refilled to the process, they are participating in and so forth. But I mean, in a sense, I don't need to, my, my primary case, I'd get there on the language of the regulations, and it's not directly on point, I accent. But on any view, it doesn't support the opposite propositions. That's all. Procurement Act twenty twenty three. Now, I don't know where we kind of ended up with this because my learning friend asked a little bit of encouragement from the bench, didn't press the point. If it's helpful, unless you tell me you don't need to hear from me, I'll just give you the ad line points on it. So first, so it's section one oh six of the Procurement Act twenty twenty three, which I think is the page, I've given it, page one oh two of the authorities. It's a completely different provision, it's a completely different structure. As I think my Lord, Lord Justice Coulson observed, what it effectively does is amalgamates. It takes elements from reg ninety two of the PCRs and it takes different elements from ninety three. So the six months comes from ninety three, for example. The date of knowledge comes from ninety two. And it, and it's not a criticism of the, might be a perfectly sensible division, but it's called a squishes them together and applies them to everything. So it's a sort of amalgam of both. On no possible view does it reproduce the law as it existed under the previous regulations. It's impossible to say that. Um, it plainly works differently because, and in particular, you don't have to worry about relevant reasons, that phrase isn't used. So how this is supposed to assist us on the meaning of relevant reasons with respect, I'm is a bit beyond me. There's this principle which I accept exists, that you can use subsequent legislation to construe earlier legislation in limited circumstances. I mean, the cases are quite careful about it. I'll just go to one, the, the first case, to show you how that's supposed to work. But before we get to that, I mean, whatever that might, whatever the position might be in relation to Parliament enacting later legislation which interacts with its own earlier legislation, and whether you can draw assistance from that, it's not what we're dealing with here, because the regulations are implementing the directive, which is the same wording, so it doesn't matter. The, um, you, in my submission, it would be completely constitutionally, even in, even in international law terms improper for you to use the twenty twenty three act to construe the EU directive, which ultimately is what this is about, it's the same words. But in any event, the principle is much, much, much more circumscribed than, oh, look, we've got some later legislation. Let's, let's interpret the older, older legislation, which is differently worded, if it meant the same thing. And you can see that from what the first case, well, the first case in the bundle on it, and the one that's always cited in the later cases. So that's Kate Brandy. Which is at seven. And if the court, just turning it up. So this is a case, it's an old case, it's about the, i- 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 the issue in the case was a issue of construction of the Finance Act nineteen fifteen, and I must remember not to say nineteen, twenty fifteen, it's nineteen fifteen. And it was whether a particular provision in the nineteen fifty act, and I'm not going to try and explain it by reference to the deal of provisions, that's all right. Um, means that you can charge excess, something called excess profits duty on a business which began after the commencement of World War One. So there was presumably a point in the wording of the nineteen fifteen act, which arguably meant that it only applied to businesses which hadn't hadn't existed, um, had existed prior to the commencement of the war. That's the issue. So as we'll see in a moment, and without going to it, we'll just see it from what the judge says. The critical provision, the operative provision of the nineteen fifteen act is ambiguous, as it expressly says, it's linguistically ambiguous, but provisions in the late, in two bits of later legislation, the Finance Acts of nineteen sixteen and nineteen twenty appear to proceed on an assumption about what the earlier act meant. So in other words, as between the two, two competing ambiguous possible meanings of the nineteen fifteen act, the later acts proceed on the basis, or presumably only makes sense on the basis that one of those two, two meanings is to be adopted. And as it happens, the meaning is that you can charge duty on a business which commences after the war starts, but we don't need to. So if we then with all of that in mind, go to the critical passage. There are two bits in the same paragraph on, shows, one is the bit that's always cited, and then just reading on, we'll see how it's actually working in the case. So the bit that's always cited, page one one four. You see the black line, and presumably, we have got a report of this. You don't have transcripts of nineteen fifteen. I think it is, um, Lord Stern, master of the role. I think it is clearly established in Attorney General Clarkson that subsequent legislation on the same subject may be looked to in order to see what the proper, what is the proper construction to be put upon an earlier act, where that earlier act is ambiguous. I quite agree that subsequent legislation, if it proceeds upon an erroneous construction of previous legislation, cannot alter that previous legislation. In other words, Parliament gets it unambiguously wrong. You can't just twist them any of the other thing. But if there be any ambiguity in the earlier legislation, then the subsequent legislation may fix the proper interpretation which is to be put upon the earlier. And that's, as I say, that's the bit that always gets cited for the general, but see how that's working in the judge's mind. You just read on it, read a bit later in the paragraph. We pick it up over the page one one four, as a bundle, four one five in the court. So. Yeah. If we just pick it up really top of the page, I do not find it possible to say that those words are not, this is in the nineteen fifteen act now, are not capable of two constructions. I've mentioned two constructions. One would, one would exclude post-war business, one would not do so. So that's the ambiguity. I will not say that it would include them, because if they are not excluded, they're included by section, you know, I'm not sure about that point. I think there are two possible constructions. And then, it is perfectly obvious that the Act of nineteen sixteen and the Act of nineteen twenty both assume that the Act of nineteen fifty was so framed as to include post-war business. And therefore, it seems to me to assume, and really to direct, that the second construction, which doesn't exclude it, is the right construction. And then he says, that was a view taken by Rolat J. He said this. I've come to the conclusion that se- um, section forty five, so it extended the scope of the Act of nineteen fifteen. I do not personally like to put it quite in those words. I do not say extends the scope, but I agree with what he goes on to say next. I must treat this exposition in the Act of nineteen sixteen um, in the same way as if it had been given by a court binding on me, compelling me to consider the act in a particular way. So what you've got is a situation which one does occasionally encounter, where some later piece of legislation is designed to interact with the earlier legislation and only makes sense on, on, on a particular assumption about what the earlier legislation may have meant. And it's a legitimate aid to the construction of the earlier legislation to say, well, Parliament later thought it meant X, not Y, so we should take the same approach. It's only irrelevant when there's an ambiguity, and of course, we say there is one, and I. Um, but it's a very limited and precise exception. What it is absolutely not is the idea that because Parliament has legislated on a particular subject at a later date, you pick up any earlier bit of legislation about that subject and assume it meant the same thing. I mean, it just can't begin to mean that. It's completely contrary to every possible canon of construction. So what, where does the, now, the phrase relevant reasons doesn't appear in the later act, as I've already said. It can't possibly tell you something therefore about what it meant. And what Parliament did is actually replace the early legislation with a provision which is obviously in many ways, like in detail, markedly different, so it can't possibly help, help with some construction in my submission. May have changed law. I mean, the twenty twenty three act does change the law. After that was why, that's why we left the EU, as I understand it, but. Anyway, there we go. So that's that point. And then I think the last point I have, sorry, there is one other point I want to make. Logical consequences. So this is, this point was made orally, but if we just go back to the skeleton to see how it's put. Paragraph forty seven of the skeleton, that's the same, my learning friend's skeleton. Which is at page twenty one of the court bundle. It said the judge, sorry, I'll just wait till you get there. It said that the judge's reasoning, for which read, I suppose, misbeauty submissions or the contention he's making, whatever. The judge produces illogical consequences. Forty seven one, the judge's reasoning amounts to saying that where a party has not taken part in a procurement process, only the six month limitation period can apply. Well, with respect, that's just wrong because of ninety three, three and four. Just doesn't mean that. That's wrong. Unequivocally, undoubtedly wrong. And I think my learning friend actually accepts that ninety three, three and four could have applied. Forty seven two, two implausible consequences are said to arise. Where a party by its own error fails to take part in a procurement process, it would be in a better position in terms of limitation than a party that did take part was informed, but was informed it had been unsuccessful. Pointing there, that's wrong because that party wouldn't have standing. Because once you've got a procurement exercise on foot, a party that doesn't take part, doesn't have standing to complain, that's a consequence, if it's in doubt, I'm not sure that particular bit is in doubt, that's a consequence of my lord's judgment in IGT. But if we just think about why it arises in relation, just on the wording of regulation ninety one, which is the standing provision. A party which complains only of an error of process which occurs during the procurement exercise will suffer no loss if it had already ruled itself out by not taking part. That's why they don't have standing, they suffer no loss. It's as simple as that. So they, so, so it doesn't have the consequence that's said in forty seven two one. Then the other one is forty seven two two, still in the same paragraph. An aggrieved party that did take part in a procurement process could simply circumvent the thirty day limitation period by bringing a challenge in the name of a company that was not party to the process. Well, that's expressly ruled out by my lord's judgment in IGT. That's the very pointed issue in IGT. In other words, a sub, the only people who can, who have standing are those who take part in the exercise, not subcontractors, subsidiaries, et cetera. So, so the logical consequences point, that's out of forty seven, which as I say, I think were made already. Are just wrong, as simple as that. And there is one last point, I'm so sorry, and I, I meant to go to earlier, but I'll, I'll just pick one.
The point at forty seven point four.
Yes.
The, the Grossman exception. That, that doesn't, that, that wouldn't cover, for example, the party by its own error not taking.
Doesn't help, doesn't help at all. I mean, they, it's interesting how it's put. The parties in the scenario set out above would plausibly. Well, you might get permission to apply for usual view at the test, but you're not going to win. They wouldn't have, they wouldn't have standing. I don't agree. So, sorry, the last thing I just wanted to do, and I said I'd do it and I forgot, was to take you to the, because of course, to the directives. The two bits of the directive doesn't matter. Now, um, unfortunately, we haven't quite got the right bit in the bundle. Because what we need are, it's in the skeleton, is regulation, the critical bit is regulation, sorry, article, I should say, two F of the remedies directive. Now, it's fully set out in my skeleton. So I wonder if at this stage I can just refer to it now, and we'll give you a copy in a minute. So, sorry.
Which remedies directive, the twenty?
Nineteen eighty nine directive.
Oh, nineteen, uh, uh.
Yeah, which is still in force. What happens is.
Yeah, this is, this is still in force, because this is, that's one of the underlying currents in IGT.
And the night, what happens is the nineteen eighty nine directive gets amended and amended is amended. So it's really quite different from any nineteen eighty nine directive.
Yeah.
And the reason why you haven't got the right provision in the bundle is because you've got the amending reg, legislation from two thousand and seven, which introduces the current provision, but it's been further amended since, so.
So the only directive, we've, we've got the directive.
Yeah. Have you got the?
We haven't got the eighty nine directive at all.
Perhaps I should give you that. Yeah. I've got three copies to hand up, which just have the bits we need. Thank you. So this is the consolidated version of the remedies directive. It is the whole directive, but it's quite, mercifully, quite short. It's a provision which is set out in exactly the word for word, but. And it's set out in paragraph twenty nine in the skeleton. Let's look at the original now that we've got it. So if you go sort of one page from, one physical page from the back, it's three pages, three pages from there, if that makes sense.
Article two F.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
So article two F, sorry, my lord, see, my lord has to take a note.
I've got article two F. Did you say there were lots of pages?
No, there's not a lot of pages. Sorry. No, I said there wasn't a lot of pages.
Yeah.
You've got article two F, right. So article two F is pretty much, is, is plainly, and we'll see this is obvious, is the source of regulation ninety three in terms, it gives you the six month limit and then the two exceptions, the two thirty day limits. And as to the thirty day limit, it's not, the reason with some uses is not worded identically. So members, if we just look at two F as a whole, one, member states may provide the application review in accordance with two D one, and two D one is the declaration of ineffectiveness must be made, A, before the expiry of at least thirty calendar days, and then there are two limbs, I'll comment them, and in any case before six months. So that's obviously the source of ninety three. And the two limbs are exactly what we've already seen. So the first one corresponds to three, ninety three, three and four. I won't, I don't need to trouble you with what it says about the directive, but it's the same thing. And then the, um, the second limb is five, ninety three, five and six, and this is how it's worded. The contracting authority informed the tenderers and candidates concerned of the conclusion of the contract, provided that this information contains of the summary of the relevant reasons. And the only point is that you don't have, and obviously, if I'm right on ninety three, five, it's doing the same thing as ninety three, five. But you don't have the conditionality, for example, the would have in the way this is worded. It's not the reasons you would have been entitled to if you'd done X, Y and Z. It's the reasons, the exact reasons which you would get under fifty five two. So some of the submissions, at least, that my learning friend made about how he gets around what I obviously say is the plain wording, is impossible on this version of the vision. On my submission as to ninety three, five, there's no problem. It does exactly what this does. That's really the short point. Now, it obviously cross refers to article fifty five two of the twenty fourteen directive. You do have that, but it's identically worded to reg fifty five of the, uh, of the regs. So I'll just tell you where it is and not say any more about it. I'll just tell you where it is and not say anything more about it. But that's in tab four, page thirty nine, article fifty nine, fifty five, so it's one of those cases where the article number of the directive actually corresponds to the regulation number in the BCRs, and that's just the same wording.
It's not quite identically worded, is it? Just as I look.
Fifty five?
Yes.
Well, the only difference, at least the only difference I could see, is that if we turn, perhaps we turn up fifty five, is that you don't have all of the subnumbering. I don't think there's any other.
Maybe I'm looking at the wrong thing.
Yeah. So page thirty nine, we're comparing page thirty nine with, let's just, my lesson is, page number, comparing page thirty nine with page.
I know, it might be the same, yes.
I think it's the same, I think the difference is we, if you look at page sixty four of the bundle, the way fifty five one is worded is it says, it has a sort of opening bit, and then it says A, B, C, D.
Yes.
And the A, B, C, D is removed, but not the substance of what A, B and C did. And the same is true for three, but in fact not true for two. So two has A, B, C, D in the original as well as in the, I think that's the only difference. I, I looked reasonably careful, I'm.
Yes.
It's something I'm capable of getting wrong.
I hadn't focused on this word before, but it's actually in both places, and that's the word unsuccessful.
Yes. Well, unsuccessful, obvi, in my submission, I mean, I think, sorry, I think I made the point, but I may have made it shortly, I mean, unsuccessful obviously means unsuccessful in relation to what? You're not unsuccessful. You've not sense, you can't sensibly describe as unsuccessful because you've asked for a procurement exercise to take place, you're unsuccessful in the exercise. We're not an unsuccessful candidate, I mean, you've got my point, we're not a candidate full stop, we're plainly not an unsuccessful candidate, because we, we haven't asked for it anyway, we, we've told them we've got to do it, actually, but anyway, never mind, but anyway. Them said you've got a discretion to do it, we said you've got a legal obligation to do it. Possibly be described as unsuccessful.
Yeah.
My lord, my, my lords, my lady, unless there are questions, those are mine.
No, thank you very much, Mr. Beale.
A couple of points I need to reply, just don't forget, first of all, I think my learned friend made some submission before he came on to deal with Alston in relation to the question for the mark from my little friend, Justice Colson, as about how to phrase candidate, including an economic operator or contractor who would have wished to be awarded a contract. And he said that that term wasn't to be equated with economic operator, you recall that he maintains that he is an economic operator, presumably for the purposes of standing, he doesn't want to lose on top of the conundrum. Of course, it's not quite right that all economic operators have standing. No, I didn't suggest otherwise, sorry. Please, I didn't interrupt you. Well. Standing, as, as we have seen, there are certain categories of economic operator which clearly don't, the obvious case being those of, of subcontractors, who would be interested in the outcome of the tender, but do not have standing to bring a claim themselves. He said that a candidate, a candidate, you must submit a request to participate, that's not quite the wording, but I, I take the point. A candidate, of course, is, is someone who has sought an invitation to take part i- in the definition, in Regulation two of twenty thousand and fifteen regulations. But it's not necessarily, and this goes back to the submissions you made right at the beginning of this afternoon, not necessarily in response to a call for competition. You'll recall that he took that requirement, if we look at Regulation twenty four, it took you to the various procedures that follow on from Regulation twenty six, which is the choice of procedure, and he said what he calls with the restricted procedure, it says, in restricted procedures, this is in fact a particular procedure, the restricted procedure, any economic operator may submit a request to participate in response to a call for competition. And that is what the restricted procedure involves, the contracting authority puts out a call for competition, normally by contract notice, there are other ways that it can be done, and will then receive requests to participate, and it will decide whether or not it wants to allow that. But in the definition of candidate, on page forty one, Regulation two, candidate means an economic operator that has sought an invitation or has been invited. It is not qualified in that seeking of the invitation is in response to a call for competition. So the submissions, with respect that I made before lunch, are, are still valid, it is possible for someone to seek to be invited, to be allowed to participate, without that having come, following a call for competition. And he candidly admits that his client would clearly have wished to have been awarded the contract, and whilst there wasn't a call for competition, that's precisely what it was attempting to do, it was seeking to be allowed to participate in some competition, presumably with E W G in that period in, between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two. The, the, the reason I, I mentioned the fact that there's only a class of economic operator, sorry, of, yes, of economic operator, which will, will have standing, is because those are, involve the detailed discussion that my learned friend, Justice Colson, had in, in his judgment in IGT, which shows what those categories are, and that he includes, or can include, somebody who would wish to have participated, but was unable to do so because, looking certainly at the European and Irish decisions, was unable to do so because there wasn't a competition i- in the first place. The second point I wish to make is in relation to, to section fifty five, but my learned friend in my submission too glibly elided the duties on a contracting authority in respect of competitive tender procedure, which has led to a successful award, I, in the sense that somebody gets the contract, and there are specific duties in relation to that, and they're found in Regulation eighty six, and I'll take you to that in just a moment, and the duties under section of Regulation fifty five, which deal, in our submission, at the very least, in addition to a whole subset of different reasons. Regulation eighty six is at page sixty six in tab three. These are best-headed notices of decision to award a contract or conclude a framework, and subject to paragraphs five and six, the contracting authority shall send each candidate and tender a notice communicating its decision to award a contract or conclude a framework. And then the content of the notices is set out in some considerable detail, and it includes, for instance, the reasons why you lost, I think was the expression my learned friend used, notably the characteristics and relative advantages of the winning tender over your own tender. And that is a duty which exists whether or not anyone asks for it, and until candidates and local contenders are provided with that information, the time limit for bringing a claim almost certainly will not be beginning to run. Now contrast that with Regulation fifty five. Fifty five one is almost, I think I'm right in saying, almost exclusively dealing with procedures which do not lead to the successful award of contract, because, for instance, fifty five one A is a decision not to conclude a framework agreement, or not to award a contract for which there has been a call for competition, because it is open to a contracting authority to abandon for, for a number of reasons, a decision to recommence the procedure, or a decision not to implement a dynamic purchasing system. And fifty five two, insofar as it is referable at all to fifty five one, needs to be looked at in that light. Fifty five two then deals with not the duty of a contracting authority to provide such information in any event, but when it receives a request from a candidate or tenderer, and then it is under a duty as quickly as possible, or within fifteen days of having written this request, to inform any successful candidate of the reasons for the rejection of its request to participate. So that certainly does not mean it's a rejection of its request to participate in, in a, in an ongoing competitive tender procedure. Now, it is true that B, B, C and D clearly do assume that, because there you've got unsuccessful tenders, and therefore, at the very least, they must have, they would have submitted a tender. But in, in contrast, fifty two A provides for information to be provided to an unsuccessful candidate, and in our submission, as I said before, the, the language of the German, that can be someone who would have wished to participate in the procedure, albeit that there wasn't one, and makes that known to the contracting authority, and if so, it is entitled to receive the reasons for its rejection of its request to participate. And with the greatest of respect, despite the my learned friend's submissions this afternoon, that is precisely what the local authority did in this case, when it was contacted on many occasions by, by the respondent. The, the reasons why you lost are actually, insofar as a request is made, probably those found in fifty five two B, fifty five two C, and fifty five two D. So the submission I, I simply make in response on a Regulation fifty five is fifty five two, of course, it, it, which is like the Regulation ninety three, it is used in the hypothetical, but insofar as it is referable to fifty five one, does not mean that it, it will have involved necessarily a competitive tender procedure that leads to a successful award of a contract. Well, I'm just going to check if there's anything else.
Yes.
One of the last submissions in reply.
Thank you very much. Well, as you'd anticipate, we are not going to give judgment here and now. In accordance with our practice, you'll be supplied with the judgments in draft for you to correct our typing and English, but not with a view to rearguing the case. I know you will have well in mind the importance that is attached to the embargo. I think you've already supplied lists of people to whom the draft should be sent. If there proves to be anybody else who you would wish to receive the draft, you should, of course, come back to us. At the stage at which you receive the draft, we'd be grateful if you would seek to agree an order in consequential matters. If there are any matters on which you don't agree, could we please have brief written submissions, and we'd expect to settle the points in the order that we make. But thank you both very much for very helpful submissions.
Can you leave the copies? Of the judgment, of the, of the, the report? Yes, we'll get them, we'll put them on, we'll get them put on the desk.
That'd be very kind.
Yeah. So I've only got three, I haven't got all of them, but I'll give you the ones I've got.